Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, January 15th, 2019. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence. The only thing I want to call to your attention is I drafted a reply to Mr. Steib, which went out. And we'll keep an eye on that site, make sure everything is copacetic over there. There is no public input, so I'm going to move on to item number four, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, so, moved and seconded. Any input, questions, comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of tax refunds. I'll put a motion on the floor to issue tax refunds as requested by the Tax Collector's Office in the amount of $5,870.85. That is, and those are just re-
Overpaying the taxes, right?
Yep. Overpayment of taxes. All right, who seconded that?
I seconded.
Okay, who seconded? Any questions?
No.
That's good, because Ann's not here, so. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Consideration of creating the P.T. Barnum Square Holiday Display Committee. As we promi- I should say, as I promised, I don't think I can blame you guys for that. We're going to create an ad hoc committee to, or I recommend it, creating an ad hoc committee to study the issue and come up with procedures that are fair for everyone for holiday display. Dan, what was the final count on the number of people?
There's six, maybe seven.
Okay.
And then I still need to compare and see if maybe I've got everybody that you have on your, like, I just wanted to compare to your emails also.
Okay. What I was going to recommend is that we basically create a committee to let every volunteer participate in it. There's not that many people, even if there's one or two more. Because I don't want anybody to feel that they're being left out. They're good enough to volunteer, to help us out with this. And I think the way to proceed would be, we would vote to create this ad hoc committee and specify the number of volunteers. And then we would provide them with the information they need and the questions that they would need to answer, and the town attorney could prepare them. So it would be like, you know, how many displays would be allowed? Should they be allowed? I mean, we're kind of have to start with the basic question. Under what conditions would we determine that the P.T. Barnum is too crowded? And then offer other venues? And what would those venues be? So, those are the things. Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, I have a suggestion. I think what we should use the very same thing as we do for Bennett Park.
Okay.
Once you've established a date, that is confirmed for that period of time. Right now, it was, you know, it was overcrowded. I thought, like, we've got a sign there right now, "I love you." Was it Emily or Emma? I forgot.
Emily, yeah. That's the young woman who was murdered.
But, you know, the question comes down to, it's just not everybody can just go there and put a sign up.
Yeah.
And we just have to regulate it. And what I like about the Bennett property is, you know, you established a date, fine, you're there. There are other venues around the town that can be used in a similar situation. I use this example where the Blue Star Mothers have got-
The Memorial, yeah.
Yeah, that could be used. I mean, there's some of the other places, even down the street here, at the little triangle that we've got. You know, I think it should be, don't overcrowd it. That's my argument.
Okay.
My argument is, I don't think we should have any, anywhere in town.
On public property.
On the public property.
Yeah.
It just gets to be too much, and to have it spread out through town, it becomes like a billboard town. You know, I'm even upset with all the little posters that, you know, was around town for this function or that function.
That might just take us into election pur- tur-.
Well-
Tourists.
That would be a money-saving proposition.
I think I might agree with you on that one.
Now we're digressing, but I'll let me say to the record, if lawn signs were outlawed, I would love that. I would absolutely love it.
There's a few towns that don't allow it.
Yeah, or they allow it on certain pieces of property.
That's true. I would, I think I was driving through a neighborhood, it was South County someplace, but there was a corner, there must have been a hundred signs.
Westport was a classic example.
So they just crowd them in one area?
Crowd them all in one area, yeah.
You know, even having the Christmas tree lighting on the P.T. Barnum Square, I think is outlet, it's-
I would say so.
Size.
It's outlet, yeah, safety.
The safety issue. I really, you know, I see the fire truck come down there, and the parents are right there with their kids and their carriages and stuff, and they don't realize how big that truck is.
Yeah.
You know, and I had mentioned before, and I was, I'd like to work on a project to get a Christmas tree, put it on the front lawn here, and they could have the Christmas tree lighting here. I mean, that's here or there, but-
Yeah.
You know, I'm in favor of, because I think the people who said that we're going to have a committee look at it.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not saying I'm going to be prejudiced against it, I'll listen to their comments, but-
Yeah.
That was my comment about the things on the-
Yeah, by law, this body still has to make the final decision.
Right, right, so we can still make the final decision.
We're going to ask them for a recommendation. All right, so why do we do this? I'm proposing a framework here, so it's not in the form of a motion yet, but I was thinking of creating an ad hoc committee to be no more than ten, to exist effective immediately and must conclude its work by, let's just say, June 1st.
I agree with that one, yes.
Okay, so then I'll just restate that as a motion. A motion that we create an ad hoc committee of no more than ten, to commence immediately, consisting of those volunteers who have raised their hand to date, as of today's date, which is the 15th of January, and the committee will be dissolved on June 1st, 2019. Okay, do you have a second?
Session.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So we had a request, number seven on our agenda here is, this is actually a bill from last year. We have been asked by several of our volunteer firefighters to consider, from 2018, HB 5277. And this is an act, as you can read, an act extending the municipal property tax relief to retired volunteer firefighters, fire police officers, and emergency medical technicians. So, we already have a tax abatement program for current firefighters and EMTs. So if they're active with either of our two departments, there is a, it's a modest property tax abatement, but there is one, I think it's up to $1,000. And this is a, this was a bill that was, I don't know if this passed the legislature. Do you know if this passed?
It did, it did pass.
Did it pass? Okay. So what this bill would do is allow us to go back to whoever we have who was currently retired, who is no longer active, and reward them for that, for their service with the- So basically, apparently what this says is that, is that once you qualify as a firefighter, as a volunteer firefighter, and you're active, then you can get a property tax abatement forever. You know, even after you retire, you're no longer active. So that's-
Well, but don't you have to have one year, or 10 years, or 20 years in, or something?
You've got to have a tenure or something.
Yeah, because if you just go one year, or two years, you're not going to get a tax relief for the rest of your life.
Well, what I was going to suggest is how I've, you know, we just put this on the agenda.
Right, so we can discuss it.
We can discuss it. I have not seen the language of HB 5277, so-
Why don't we refer to Marty to look at that and what we currently have on our books?
Well, that's, I was going to suggest we refer to Marty and to the, we actually have an ad hoc tax abatement committee that's meeting right now, going over the elderly benefits.
Okay.
And we can have them analyze the potential cost of that, like, look at the number of retired firefighters and do, and make a recommendation on that, as to how much, you know, how much are we talking about? I can't imagine it'd be very much, though.
But do firefighters right now, after so, so many years, I want to guess, I think it's 20?
Yeah, for the retirement?
No, yeah, for the retirement.
Well, that's only a certain amount of people. That program has stopped.
Right, okay.
So it's only the people that were in that timeframe are eligible for that.
Yeah.
Okay. But if you're active, you don't, and say, after 65, 70, say they're still active, they still would not be eligible then, because they're not retired?
No, they, if they're active, they're still eligible for the current abatement.
The current abatement.
Yeah, if you're, if you're active right now, there is a modest abatement that's processed through the Tax Collector's Office.
For fire.
Well, for fire.
Fire, fire police.
Really? For police also?
Fire police.
Fire police.
The fire police.
Oh, okay.
And probably EMT.
I would take it, it's EMTs as well.
Yeah, and EMT.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm misconstrued, I thought we're also including police, now I was going to say.
No, 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 because they have their regular salary requirements.
Yeah, they have a regular pension.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we forward-
Mr. Marty.
Yeah, HB 5277, on public safety and security, to the town attorney and to the ad hoc tax abatement committee for their analysis and recommendation.
Okay.
All right.
I was actually looking at-
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you. Next is a resolution that just simply authorizes me to sign an application for a clean water fund financing grant slash loan. This has to, this is pursuant to a request from the Public Utilities Commission.
Second.
All right, well-
We're going to discuss that.
Which project is this for?
Let me see.
I think it's for the new distribution lines.
Yeah, it's the new distribution lines, yeah. Yes, new distribution, and then there's a second one on the sewer. So let me read the first one, it's not that long, because Marty will watch the video, and he'll yell at me if I don't read it, I'll, uh, move. Being resolved that it is in the best interest of the town of Bethel to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, in furtherance of this resolution, First Selectman Matthew Nickerbocker is duly authorized to enter into and side, sign said contracts on behalf of the town of Bethel, Connecticut. First Selectman is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal governments in connection with said contracts and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto. Clean Water Fund. So is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And, next one is, move to authorize, make, authorize the Public Works Director, Mr. Thomas Villet, to complete, sign, and submit a clean water fund application to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the sanitary sewer evaluation survey for subareas 9, 12, and 15, in the amount of $288,376. This is clean water fund eligible, and therefore, the fund grant will be reimbursed up to 55% or $158,402.7.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number 10. Did Marty send, this is the Rizzo contract, did he send the contract over?
No.
Okay.
He didn't send the contract or the lease. He got some questions he answered by Tom Gallford and Doug Orange, and it said that it would probably be a lease that would look very similar to the YNCA.
Okay. Well, okay, so what we need to do here is, this is kind of dragged on too many months, but as we discussed some, I think last fall, Rizzo Corporation is going to, is planning to lease the old police station from us for a dollar per year, and use it as a headquarters for the school renovation projects. And what has held this up is that lead was found from the firing range that had leached through the air handling system, and it settled in some of the offices. So their, OSHA required that the station be cleaned. That has been completed as a-
They're, they're now doing it?
Yeah, it was yesterday and today.
Oh, they completed it?
Yeah. But they, Tom Gallford still has to have them inspected.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the lease subject to final review by town attorney and by the fire marshal.
Second.
Okay, and that will take care of it.
Also, we have to set a town meeting for this, don't we?
I don't think so. Because it's not, it's not over five years, and it's a-
There's no dollar amount?
Well, it's a dollar.
Yeah, but when we do the YNCA, then we have to have a public hearing, and we did a public hearing for the railroad station, and-
Yeah, because they were over the dollar limit, and they were longer, the railroad station was a 10-year lease, and YNCA, what, Jay, it was what, a 7-year lease, I think?
Well, they just-
No, if we have to set YNCA-
Yeah, all right, well, that's why I asked for, I asked in the building committee to get this to you, because I thought we had to have a town meeting to move it along.
I don't think so, but-
Okay.
If we have to have one, we'll have lunch and-
Who's going to, is Rizzo Corporation going to take any responsibility or liability?
Yeah, they're going to take over the maintenance of the building, so if the heater craps out, they've got to fix the heater.
I was going to ask that question. Same thing for electricity and all that, that's at their expense, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and-
Well, that's a good question, really, you know, that's, Marty's working out, because they pay for electricity one way or the other. But I think if Rizzo charges the project, the electricity gets reimbursed.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. The only other thing is, the building itself, I know we spoke about this before, I'm not too crazy about after, when they get through with it, about taking pictures of before and after, as far as the physical facility itself, in those damage.
Well-
Yeah, I'm not concerned.
Yeah, you're not concerned? No, okay. I don't say because it's very depressing going in.
I know that, I know that.
So you're not interested in charging a big security?
No, I, right.
Okay. Paul, I can tell you, in the email that Doug had sent to Marty, it said, "I'm not aware of any other limitations other than," he talked about the lead, and then he said, "Other than lead, I'm not aware of any other limitations other than Rizzo should take complete responsibility for the building, including all utilities, H-bags, systems, and purchasing of any and all fuels."
Yeah, yeah, that was set up.
Actually, they're going to measure the oil when they take over, so get reimbursed for the oil.
Oh, good. Okay, so did we get a second on that?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, Rich, all right, so any other questions?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Last item, actually, we have to table, because this is a consideration of appointment to the various appointed boards and commissions, and I, both parties are behind schedule, I haven't seen any recommendations from either side.
Oh, I'll call.
Okay. It's not really a problem, because if the appointments are not made on time, the current incumbents simply continue until such time as they are replaced or reappointed, so it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Okay. All right. I have one other thing, I don't know if we could discuss or not.
What's that?
Worcester Street.
Oh.
The building over there.
All right, we want to make a motion to add it to the agenda? Because this is regular, right?
Yes.
I'm making a motion, we add 10 Worcester Street to the agenda.
Okay.
Any purpose?
No.
Okay.
I'll second. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to add discussion of property attendant Worcester Street to the agenda. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That is now item number 12.
Now, do we need to go into executive session?
Are we, are we allowed to go into executive session without having that posted on the agenda, or not?
If I don't know, I can kind of take a minute to work.
Or we'll just discuss it, I mean, I don't-
Well, let's discuss it without using specific-
Numbers?
Yeah, without using specific-
Okay. All right, this came to our attention that the new owners of 10 Worcester Street might be considering selling that piece of property to the town again. You know it's one of the-
Yeah, I know it's one of the-
Right.
They've only been owners for what, six months?
Six months, yeah. June, June something, I don't know, they took title. June 13th, they took title.
Okay, there we are.
Okay, so it's just six months.
Right.
You know, I think it's a valuable piece of property for the town to acquire. I understand, you know, they're asking more money than that it's valued at, and I understand why, because they can do, it's currently a two-family house, and they can put at least 12 units in, on that property.
Without using our driveways.
Without using our driveways, right. They were talking about up to 18 at one time, and then it was 15, and now I think it's 12. So, I'd like, you know, to make the board aware of it, and see if we can negotiate some kind of number with the current owners. It's going to be more than what we had talked about last time.
I, I-
They took title to it, they've had engineering done on the property to see how they could expand it, and, you know, there's four partners in on the property, and they would also probably looking to make a bit of a profit on it.
The four partners, is that one of the former owners?
No.
Okay. No, I agree, Rich, because, you know, as this town grows, you're going to need more space. You don't have enough parking as it is, and I also think a little green over there would be very nice also. No question, once it's gone, it's gone.
Yeah.
And, no, it's a good idea, I think we should pursue it.
I've had a discussion with the planning and zoning officer, and, you know, a little park in the front, possibly closing off that driveway, and making another driveway to go out to School Street, and that way there, that section could be closed off there for more parking in that existing area. So, you know, again, it's really the values to the town of the piece of property.
Yeah.
And again, we have to see what we can get it for.
Sure.
So, you know, between Marty and myself, if the board wishes, I'd like to negotiate with the gentleman for that.
All right, I think we can handle that by consensus.
Okay.
Just be, well, yeah, Marty will be involved, so he'll be sure to say, give all the disclaimers, like, you still have to do this and that.
Right, this and that, yeah. And, and the planning and zoning is willing to put up a deposit that we could hold the property while all this other stuff is going.
Okay.
And again, the deposit depends how, if it becomes open space, then we don't have to reimburse it, but if the town wants to assume the whole piece of property, we would have to repay the deposit back to the planning and zoning, open space fund.
Right.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Number 11, do you need to make a motion to table that?
Not really, because there was nothing to act on.
Okay.
So, we can just skip it. You know what, I'm going to claim executive privilege, and I kind of forgot to do a First Selectman's report. The only thing I wanted to point out to you guys is, included in correspondence, some information about the recycling market, and there's further deterioration. It's a national problem. Bethel will work with HRRA to conduct a pilot, a test in our transfer station, and what that pilot is designed to do is see if it's feasible to segregate glass from all the other recycling, so you have-
The white glass.
The white, yeah, the virgin glass, basically. Oak Ridge Recycling, which used to be called Winter's Brothers, will provide all materials, extra bins, signage. They will actually assign employees to be on-site on Saturdays to help people segregate stuff. If they come in using the old method, they'll help them sort the glass out. They will provide a newsletter to go out to all our current permit holders, announcing the pilot, announcing the test, and, you know, with some materials that says, "This is acceptable," and this, "These are things you can't put in the bin anymore." All things can still be recycled, but the glass has to be pulled out separately.
Just white?
Yeah.
What are you going to do with the colored glass? Just throw it in the river?
No, actually, colored glass is still okay, as long as it's, as long as it's virgin glass. Like, if you get, say, a beer bottle or beverage bottle that has a tint to it, that's fine. But a drinking glass, like, if you go down to Williams-Sonoma and buy drinking glasses, that has a certain plastic content to it, vinyl content, so those can't go. Ceramic mugs can't go, mirrors, no good, window panes, no good. So it's just, basically, anything that has a deposit on it, or should have a deposit on it, like-
Pickle jar.
Yeah.
A wine bottle.
Wine bottles are good.
Food or wine.
Yeah, and there's a, I know there's a bill that's going to be introduced in the legislature this year to put a deposit on wine bottles, too.
See, they can get rid of the white glass a lot cheaper, and there's more of a market for the white glass than the-
Because when I lived up in Massachusetts, as an example, it was a big, big, up there, you know, they're big on recycling, but I mean, they, they had like a ram, they had three different containers. There was white, green, and brown.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, and they would, they would send this ram in there, people loved to have a crash, so that they would just settle the glass down, there'd be no space.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Well, Oak Ridge hasn't told us that they need to separate the colors, that they just want food-grade glass, so any, like a pickle jar, any jar or bottle that a consumable beverage or food item kind of is eligible.
Great, so they're going to, we're going to send this to all of our people that have got holy good.
Yep.
While we're on the subject, I was down there, you know, we've got to make a decision relative to that entire recycling operation there. You've got bins that we spoke about that are literally rotting away.
You've got holes in the bottom.
Yeah, and they can't be welded. By the time you weld it, it's cheaper to buy a new one, I remember. We've got a truck there that is like 1994, I believe, and it's rotting away, too, you know what I mean? And the question, I keep on asking this basic question, would it be cheaper for Oak Ridge to run that operation?
Well, I, maybe, we're, I'm talking.
You're talking, because, you know, in this coming budget, we've got to address that facility. There's a lot of money to be spent on steel, you know, truck, containers, you know, every one of those containers down there, with the exception of probably the mattress container, need to be replaced.
Well, I, I'm not at liberty to speak in a public meeting right now, but we had a meeting with HRRA and, you know, a major firm on Friday afternoon here in my office, after everybody else had gone home, and we're talking about that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Because, you know, it's something to be addressed in this coming budget.
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yep.
I have another concern.
Okay.
Taylor Avenue, all the ice is-
Yes.
Is there any way we can break up that road and get some kind of drainage in there? I mean, I came down here Sunday to look at it, and it was just a sheet of ice over there.
Possibly. Dibble and I spoke about that today. He says it's very difficult to do now that winter has set in. He says it's very difficult to do now that winter has set in.
Well, I think it's all ledge, so they gotta blast it anyway.
Yeah, but, I mean, it might, it might mean that that section of the road, whether they do it now or cut it open now to relieve the water pressure from the ground, the high groundwater, that section of the road might have to stay closed for the rest of the winter.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they're looking at that.
That's where your drapers?
Just past drapers going up, and on that sharp corner, just as you go up the corner, on the right-hand side, there's a lot of water coming out of the ground there.
There's, if you notice, you know, usually when there's heavy snow and it builds up on the side of the road, you'll find places where the drains freeze and the water starts, you know, pooling in the road and then freezing into ice, there's no snow on the ground, and there's water coming out of the ground everywhere.
Highland.
Yeah, Highland. In fact, well, on Taylor, when that, when the tunnel broke open, the water was actually coming up like this. We had two people calling and said, "There's a broken water main."